Ready to go. I will unmute your mic and you are, you are ready to take over the meeting, sir. I'm trying to unmute you and I can't for some reason.
I just did it. Okay. At this time, I'd like to bring the meeting of the school committee to order and ask all of you to join with me in a pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands under nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. I am also having internet problems, so I may, if I fade out, Gary, you'll have to pick it up. Okay, can you hear me?
Can, sir.
Okay, at this moment, I'm going, in a moment, I'm going to ask the committee to join with me in a moment of silence to celebrate the life of and in respect for and in support of the family of James Donovan. Jim Donovan was an integral part of the district for many years, actually 27 years, as the instructional media coordinator. He joined Plymouth Public Schools in 1968 and retired in 1995. So at this point, please join with me in a moment of silence. Thank you very much. Okay. The next item on our agenda is the annual reorganization. It's where the Plymouth School Committee reelects its executive board. And this part of the agenda is always conducted by Dr. Maestas, so I'll turn the committee over to you, Dr. Maestas.
Thank you, Dr. Sorensen. This is the first meeting after the election of the full committee. And at this point, I would like to open up the floor for nominations for the Chair of the Plymouth School Committee for the 2021 school year. Do we have nominations? Ms. Burgess?
Yes, I nominate Jim Sorensen.
We have one nomination for Dr. James Sorensen. Do we have any other nominations for the Chair of the Plymouth School Committee? Mrs. Badger? Miss Badger?
I'd like to, I'm sorry, I'd like to nominate Ms. Savory.
We have a nomination for Ms. Savory. We have two nominations. Do we have any other nominations for the Chair of the Plymouth School Committee? According to school committee policy, the candidates that are being nominated have the opportunity to address the committee as to their candidacy for the Chair of the school committee. At this point, I'd like to turn it over to Dr. Sorensen to say a few words regarding his candidacy. Dr. Sorensen?
Okay, thank you very much. And to my fellow committee members, I appreciate your support that I have received over the time that I've been Chair. I'm not the most social guy on the block and the fact that I haven't been on Facebook in over 11 years. But having said that, I have many years teaching junior high school. I have 17 years as a member of a high school guidance department and many, many more years after that on this school committee. I believe I'm well qualified to continue to carry the will of this committee out to the community. I've demonstrated to you that your policies and direction, I've been able to speak on town meeting floor before, before all of the boards at various caucuses in town. So I believe I can continue to do that for you. After all, you set the direction and the policy and the Chair, the Chair carries that policy out to the district. I want to add one other thing. At this time, with the change of the way we deliver our product, which is education, that's changing. We have a new administration, that's changing. And I can tell you that over the years that I've been Chair, the administration has leaned heavily upon my input. And I believe at this point, with a change of administration, it would be good for this committee to maintain a consistency for our new administration, so they don't have to be concerned about working with a new Chair. So having said all of that, I certainly would accept the will of the committee, but I also feel I could really represent.
Thank you, Dr. Sorensen. At this point, I will turn the floor over to Ms. Kimberly Savory. Still getting used to that. Got to unmute you. Got you.
Sounds weird to me too sometimes. So thank you and thank you, Dr. Sorensen, for everything. You know, I accepted this nomination and I greatly appreciate your consideration for the position. As a school committee, I believe that we all have the experience and knowledge to lead the board and I'll always value that. We all share the responsibility to represent the visions and values of our community. As Chairperson, I believe per Robert's rules of order that I would be a true servant of the Assembly. We face many obstacles this year now than ever, as Dr. Sorensen said. The current pandemic situation combined with many new and yet to be appointed administrative positions will prove to be a great challenge for us. That's why I feel that this is a good time where I can contribute and step up to help this transition with a fresh perspective. As we form a new team, this is a perfect opportunity to reevaluate and redefine how we operate as a school committee. We have a wealth of experience and knowledge on this board and it's not going away. The experience is still here. I'll work hard to support and value the strengths of every person on the board. And I will help to make the committee become a sum that's greater than its part. My philosophy would be to make every member feel their strengths and interests are valued and put to good use. And I believe that leadership should be shared and consulting with MASC, this is possible. And as we work together for a new strategic plan for the district, I also think that it's a good opportunity for us to reevaluate our operating protocols. And communication is a priority. And I understand that under open meeting laws that this could be difficult, but with the guidance of the state and MASC, I'll work hard to increase communication in order to have a well-informed board. Thus helping us in decision-making and to reach our ultimate goal of supporting student success. So I also have a lot of experience in advocacy, leadership. I led the state and national PTA for several years. My close work right now with MASC and my transparency would help me to accomplish this. So thank you very much.
Thank you. So we had announcements, clarifications from Dr. Sorensen and also from Ms. Savory. At this point, I'd like to open up voting for Dr. Sorensen. Could you please put your hands up if you would like Dr. Sorensen to become or to remain as Chair of the Plymouth School Committee? One, two, three. So we have Ms. Burgess, Dr. Sorensen and Mr. Morgan. So we have three for Dr. Sorensen. I'm moving on to the vote for Ms. Savory. Please show of hands for Chair of the Plymouth School Committee. One, two, three, four. So we have four votes for Ms. Savory as the Chair of the Plymouth School Committee. And at this point, I'd like to congratulate Ms. Savory for her newly elected position as the Chair of the Plymouth School Committee. And I would like to turn the meeting over to Ms. Savory from this point on. So congratulations and the meeting is yours.
Thank you and thank you, Dr. Sorensen. So at this time, we'll accept nominations for the position of Vice Chair. Ms. Hayward?
I would like to nominate Michelle Badger for Vice Chair.
Okay, and then did I see Margie? Did you, Ms. Burgess?
I was gonna say Michelle Badger.
Okay, any, any other nominations? Okay, so I don't believe, do we need an official vote for this?
Yes.
Okay, so all in favor of Michelle Badger for Vice Chair? So we have one, two, three, four, five and six. So seven. So that's unanimous. Congratulations, Ms. Badger. All right, and at this time, we'll take nominations for the position of Secretary. Mr. Shelley?
I'm gonna Bob Morgan, Secretary.
Ms. Badger, did you have?
No, I was just gonna nominate Bob.
Awesome. Mr. Morgan? Any other nominations? Okay, all in favor of Mr. Morgan for the position of Secretary? Good. One, two, three, four, five, six, it's seven, it's unanimous. Great, congratulations, Mr. Morgan.
Thank you.
All right, so you gotta bear with me a little bit here, so, since I'm, this is the first time here. All right, so for the subcommittee and liaison appointments, I don't know, do we already have those appointments or do we need to ask for people's preferences? The appointments are already there. Okay, so if you guys, no, Peggy's going with this.
So, so this is, this is guilty.
I looked at them, but I wasn't sure.
So we have current assignments, but those assignments are only as good as today.
Okay.
So we need to take selection points from anyone who's willing to join these committees and they can submit their request to the Chair.
Okay, that's what I was gonna say. I thought they were the same ones as last time. I just wanted to double check. So if anybody has any requests, any preferences, just let us know or let me know and then we'll go ahead and get that for you for the next meeting. Okay?
Ms. Savory, I can work with you between now and the next meeting to get that documentation updated for the whole committee.
Great, thank you. All right, so the next item is the MASC resolution, the COVID-19 state funding. Dr. Maestas, did you want to speak on that?
Yeah, I think this is an important time for advocacy for funding. When this first came out, Dr. Sorensen asked my opinion on it and I, you know, there are always resolutions that are coming from MASC or recommendations. This is a very unique situation that we're in right now. I think the demand that we're going to have for increased services, increased funding that is needed for our schools, the money's gonna have to come from somewhere, as we have discussed in prior meetings. The revenue for the town of Plymouth, just like every other community in the Commonwealth, is struggling. And we're going to rely heavily on sources, other sources of funds. So in my opinion, anything that the school committee can do to lobby for additional resources for the school district is really in the best interest of us trying to make some kind of statement, an awareness of what is needed in our communities. So not only does this help Plymouth, but it helps all the communities in Massachusetts. Keep in mind that there are probably, I'm not sure what it is today, but there's probably 40, 50 school districts that have already signed on to this. So maybe more. So back to you, Ms. Savory.
Yeah, I know that in my experience, I know that the Massachusetts PTA is also signing on to this. Do we have any discussion? Does anybody have any questions or comments about the resolution? I don't think it's in, it's not listed as an action item, but do we need to vote whether or not to support this? Is that what you'd like?
It is listed as an action item.
Oh, it is? Okay, all right.
I, I, you know, Ms. Hunt, I think it's, what would happen is if there isn't affirmative action tonight on this, Ms. Grimes would let MASC know that Plymouth has joined the signatory on this particular documentation.
Okay, great.
Excuse me, I've drafted a memo from all of you to a number of people across the state and the town of Plymouth and the MASC.
Wonderful. Does anybody have any questions or comments on this? Ms. Badger?
My only thought when I was reading it, and I think obviously we all support 100% of what this is saying. We need to fully fund our schools. We need to make sure that everything, we're all set and ready. But where it uses the words, we need to ensure a statewide school reopening. So I think reopening is what I think is an interesting, I guess, word choice. I mean, depending on if we are able to. I guess reopen could mean whether we're, the kids are, you know, I have a Chromebook right in front of me. Are they using a Chromebook at home? You know, all the different ways of reopening, but to me, when I just read the opening, it meant literally school doors opening and who's 100% positive that's gonna happen?
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I think the language is general purposely because what will happen with our work with the state is we'll have three different modes that we are preparing for and it's a reopening or reconvening of school. So the wording almost assumes that doors are opening, but for the purposes of this particular resolution, it is really leaning towards the reopening of education for schools in Massachusetts.
Any other questions or comments about the resolution? All right, do we have a motion? Mr. Morgan?
Yes, I would like to make a motion to approve, support MASC resolution on the COVID-19 state funding.
Great, do we have a second? Mr. Shelley?
I'll second.
All right, any discussion? Okay, we can take a vote. All in favor of supporting the resolution?
Yes.
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 That looks like everybody's, is anybody against? Any knows?
Unanimous.
It's unanimous. Thank you. All right, so next is old business. Does anybody have anything for old business? No?
I, I just have a procedural question.
Sure.
Do we, do we have to do a roll call vote?
That's what I thought. I was about to, but then the hands went up, so I wasn't sure. Does it have to be a roll call vote?
Yes.
Okay, so we okay with that one or do you want me to go back?
I think we should probably just go back because I don't want anyone to report us.
All right, and again, that's what I was about to do, but I saw all the hands go up. All right, so we'll go and I'll do it, Dr. Sorensen says, in the order on my screen, all those in favor of supporting the motion. So Margie, I mean, Ms. Burgess, yes? Mr. Morgan?
Yes.
Dr. Sorensen?
Yes.
Mr. Shelley?
Yes.
Ms. Hayward?
Yes.
And Ms. Badger? All right, so that's unanimous. Thank you, everybody. All right, now back to old business. Anybody have anything for old business? Nothing, okay? And how about new business? Anyone have anything that they'd like to introduce to new business? Okay. This will be maybe an easy one. All right, so next up, we have the superintendent's report. Dr. Sorensen, I mean, Dr. Sorensen, Dr. Maestas.
Good evening, everyone. I have a few items to present tonight and this is probably gonna be the longer agenda item for this evening because we're gonna talk a little bit about, you know, the guidance that we're getting from the Department of Education and some of that information that, that you've all been waiting for and the community has been waiting for and so on. So we'll kind of go through exactly what's happening, what isn't happening, and we can give you some of that information. I will tell you that the superintendent report from tonight's meeting forward, I'm gonna tag team with- I'm gonna tag team with Dr. Campbell, so we can actually start to transition into the role of Superintendent. But we're going to work on this together, and I will present some of the highlights tonight. Dr. Campbell will then report on some of the other pieces that he's been directly involved with, and can add a level of clarity as we go forward. Keep in mind that we've been very busy working on our reentry, which is something that's gonna take some time, and, but we'll characterize that here in the next fifteen or twenty minutes. But one thing I want to get into before we talk about reentry, just want to remind School Committee that August tenth, August tenth is Town Meeting, and that will be a virtual Town Meeting. It'll start at 6:00 PM. And one of the things that I was asked by Town Manager Reggie is if any of you have Town Meeting booklets that you don't need, and you use the virtual agenda. If you could drop those off at my office, that would be much appreciated, because getting extra copies and printing at this time has been difficult. So if you do not need your books for Town Meeting, if you could drop those off to our front desk over at Levin Lincoln Street, that would be much appreciated. I anticipate that this will be a cumbersome meeting because of Town Meeting going to virtual mode. So Town Meeting members, as well as Finance Committee, Boris Leckman, School Committee, will all be given access to a Zoom webinar format. It's a little bit different than what we see today in, in this Zoom teleconference or video conference. It's more of the Zoom webinar, which the, there are less features that you have to be available. That will be made available to members, but that information I'll have, and we'll send it out from Ms. Grimes as soon as we get it, which probably won't be for a while. But I just want to put it on your radar that, that will be a Monday night, and I would anticipate that it'll be Monday and Tuesday most likely. One of the things that we are doing with Town Meeting preparation is we are using some of our students to do some help desk type of work with Town Meeting members who need technology assistance at home. So we have some student volunteers that will be helping for Town Meeting, and it's been, we've been planning for a month for Town Meeting. So it's, it's, it just keeps going and going, and, but I just want everybody to know that that is what's happening, okay? So let's move on to the reopening of schools. So one of the things that we have been working on here in the district, as well as every other district in Massachusetts, is taking the guidance that has been provided by the Department of Education that was shared with everyone, all, all over the Commonwealth, all over the country, received the information about Massachusetts. And we have Dr. Campbell, myself, Ms. Frye. We've been joining weekly calls with Commissioner, and one of the things that the Commissioner has said, and has been very, very clear about this, that he does not want plans of school reopening to be shared before the end of July or early August. That's very important information. We were supposed to get a letter from the Commissioner's Office last Friday that shared this information with our stakeholders, and that was the plan of the district, was to have this letter shared that the Commissioner was gonna send out, and we were gonna, and that, that letter was, in a sense, talking about, you know, that there, you know, this is a fluid situation, that, that we're looking at options that we have. Every week, there's a different situation, and we're gonna adjust appropriately. But we want to hold off as long as we can so that we can get information that's relevant, and allow, and allow our school districts across the Commonwealth to make some really important decisions. So the Commissioner reiterated that last Friday. He said, "I'm gonna tell you, I do not want plans, hypotheticals going out to communities. That is just something that we, we cannot afford right now. There's still a lot of information that has to be discovered." So let, let's talk a little bit about that, and, and some of the difficulty that we're having. And I think Dr. Campbell has texted the Commissioner three or four times in the last week, trying to clarify information relative to cafeterias, relative to bussing, relative to table configuration, whether you use desks, whether you use tables. So we have been going back and forth, developing three different models. And what we're doing, and, and Dr. Campbell has been sharing different teams along with Ms. Frye, and what we're doing is we're taking a look at how our district will, could function with three models. One would be where we would invite everyone back to school, meaning that we would run school a hundred and eighty days. We would do it trying to get students in our classrooms, and we would look at it with a model of anywhere from three to six feet of distance between desks. We have done scenarios where we do three feet. We're in the process of doing scenarios of six feet, but there is still a great deal of concern over that three-foot ruling. We are preparing to take a look and share information with the Department of Education of what our capabilities are to run the models that have been asked. Keep in mind, with the full, the, the full model, which is everyone back to school, full mode, that information is being compiled. We have to send these three models, the framework of these models, to the Department of Education. I believe it's July twenty-fourth, Dr. Campbell?
Sorry, I was muted. Thirty-first.
July thirty-first, this information has to be sent to the Department of Education. They will be forwarding to us a template that we have to populate. Dr. Campbell and his teams have put together our internal template of how we populate. We'll probably have a lot more information on that than the state will require. What we'll do is we'll pull that information, we'll send it to the Department of Education, and it has to be sent by the thirty-first, and it will be reviewed by the Commissioner's Office, and we'll get feedback on that. That's the first model. The second model would be a hybrid model, in the sense that we would have part-time live students and part-time virtual students, in the, in the sense that we'd have kids coming to school, virtual and hybrid. That model would allow students and, and school, and schools to not be as populated. So we'd have to come up with a model of trying to minimize the amount of students that come into school, and we would probably have alternating days so that we could not, we could actually limit the school population in half, which would then create a model where we could be able to take a look at that six-foot distancing, or maybe even more. The dilemmas that we are discovering with these models, Dr. Campbell will talk a little bit about them. And the last model is a full virtual model, like what we experienced the last three months of school and education, with the exception, and let me clarify that. The Commissioner has been very, very clear that if we have a virtual model, it needs to be much more robust. There will be letter grading associated, which is weighted grading, and there will be a lot more rigor to the type of education that would be presented virtually. So the, every school in Massachusetts is expected to submit three plans to the, to the Commonwealth for review by the end of July. Keep in mind, that is what we're shooting for. Things have changed, and I think that is really important to say for us here in Plymouth, that things have changed from day one, when we first had our meetings with the Commissioner, all the way until last week. So that's, that's, that's very important to keep in mind, that we have those three opportunities to plan for. And each one of them has a great deal of detail. I want to say two more things to the reopening piece, specifically to communication. I'm gonna be sending out letters, despite the Commissioner's letter, if it comes or it doesn't come, I'm sending a letter out on Wednesday to faculty and staff. That will be, it'll have a content that's relative to that population. And then I'll be sending out another letter to our parents, and that will be basically framing what we are talking about tonight, that school districts in Massachusetts are expected to, you know, submit these plans. It will not, it will not highlight exactly how Plymouth is going to move forward. What we are, what our plan to do is to get all this work done. We will then compile this information. We will share it with the School Committee on August third. That's our first School Committee meeting. On August third, we will have an opportunity, as a committee, to walk through these plans. We are expecting to have some invited guests that are not part of the school district that can help provide some background information. I will share that information with you once we, we know they're available. But I think it's important for us to know that we're not going to just make a decision one night and say, hey, we're gonna, we're gonna open school, and this is how it's gonna be. I, I think we need to take some input from the committee. But also, I also want the School Committee and the general public to know that the expectation of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts is that we open school this year, okay? Now, it might be hybrid, it might be face-to-face, it might be virtual. But again, I think that's a decision that has to be made. But our work moving forward is to present these three models. How does it impact the school district, and how do we move forward? The last thing that I want to say, which is very cumbersome for us in the school district, are, are two, are two pathways that we're really working on, and, and I give Dr. Campbell and Ms. Frye, and also Mr. Costin a great deal of credit. We are working on opportunities on how we feed children, because the guidance from the state says you can, you can have three-foot distance in the classroom, but not for lunch. So we have to figure that out. We have to also figure out transportation, because right now, a bus in Plymouth typically has a capacity of close to fifty. That capacity with three-foot distancing is going to be cut down to twenty-four. And one of the things that we have to try to figure out is, you know, how many parents are planning on sending kids on the bus? And we need to then compile that information, work with the bus company to look at additional bussing to get kids to and from school. So that is, those are the challenges that we are really facing. That is really a ten-thousand-foot view of what we're dealing with operationally. And at this point, I'd like to turn it over to Dr. Campbell, and I'm, and he has some other information to share tonight. So, Dr. Campbell, I'm sorry if I stepped on your toes on some of these points, but...
You're a hard, you're a hard man to follow, Dr. Myssis. So I will, I'll try not to be redundant from what, what you said, but kind of reiterate, as Dr. Myssis said, we have to come up with a plan. Again, it's a general plan at this point until we get some specificity from the Department of Education. And yes, I've texted the Commissioner six times this last week, so, but he's been very responsive. But that being said, we still have some unanswered questions. The transportation piece that Dr. Myssis stated, the guidance hasn't explicitly come out, but it's been implied. You know, we understand that there's social distancing measures that need to take into account. That's a significant issue for us. We're a large district, nearly seventy buses that are run out for elementary, middle, and high school. That's a significant issue. So we are working on coming up with a plan, as Dr. Myssis said, that has three models, I guess, for reopening. One would be the in-person with new safety requirements, of course. The hybrid would be in the event that we could not meet the health and safety requirements, so despite our best efforts, or if the guidance changed from, from public health, or the governor's office, or DSE. And then remote learning, of course. If we find ourselves that we need to go into remote learning again because of, and, another break, breakout of COVID-19, we need to do that. And we're also, we will be surveying families, though, in the near future. Dr. Myssis will be sending out a communication to families and to our staff, just explaining where we're going with that. But we are working in, in Subcommittee, so obviously the health and safety is number one priority for us. So our plans are taken into consideration and, and taking the guidance of a number of health experts in that process along the way. So we'll be very mindful of that, very descriptive. And really, it comes down to our operations, our general operations and our facilities, and making sure that we are mindful of how we're operating and how we're managing that to make sure that everyone feels safe and supported, and that we do that to the best of our ability. And then, then also, looking at the technology needs are gonna be significant, I can tell you, as well as, you know, some of the supports to go along with that. But we've been doing a lot of purchasing for protective equipment, and Dr. Costin has been very busy regarding that. So I'm not gonna reiterate some of the planned pieces, but I want to get into some of the grant funds that we're seeking too. So as Dr. Myssis said, this is, this is a year that's gonna be costly. These, these things don't come cheap. Transportation is very expensive. There's a lot of technology needs that we, we have to meet. And as the Commissioner has said, to kind of quote the Commissioner, he said, "This is a year of level funding plus, plus" for education. Excuse my puppy in the background is barking, if you can hear. So not knowing where we're, where we're at financially, not knowing sort of what the horizon, you know, lies, what lies ahead in the horizon for us. We're seeking as much funding as we possibly can. So to date, we've applied for several grants to support our educational and protective initiatives. I want to talk about that briefly. So first, we've submitted a grant to the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education called the Elementary and Secondary School Relief, Emergency Relief, or ESR. So these funds are largely based on Title I formula, so the money is allocated proportionally. So we, again, we haven't heard back about that grant, but we hope to hear about that in the coming weeks. Our priorities here are really to provide several technology initiatives and resources to support the work that we have to do while we're in session, whether it's a hybrid model or if we find ourselves in remote learning. So we, we've really learned a lot from this closure since March. We're taking that into consideration as we develop our grant, and this grant will hopefully provide the necessary resources that we need to, to enhance whatever model we have. In addition, we're seeking reimbursement for COVID-related resources, such as PPE, technology, and other equipment for our facilities, for our air exchange. So as you know, the COVID relief funds are available, it's approximately $225 per student to support district initiatives for unmet needs, and we're seeking reimbursement for, for those expenses as well. Another grant that's not related, but I applied for at the end of the year, is a mental health grant, which if awarded, will provide us an additional hundred, $110,000 to support the mental health needs as we re-enter our schools. I'm hoping that we hear about the status of this grant soon. We haven't, I, I keep bothering them. I'm bothering everyone who works for the Department of Education these days. But hopefully, we'll receive word of that. We were awarded that competitive grant last year, so hopefully, they see us as a worthy applicant to continue that work. But it's critically important, as we re-enter school, to really meet the mental health needs of our students and make sure that they feel supported. So this grant will allow us to do that as well. And lastly, regarding funding, we will be seeking, there's a $25 million remote learning technology grant that the Department of Education is going to be allowing districts to apply for. And this grant, the Commonwealth provides a hundred percent state match to districts for their remote learning needs. And again, here, technology is gonna be critical regardless of the situation we find ourselves in the coming years. So we'll be actively seeking these funds as well. We don't know how much we will receive. A lot of it is based on prior expenditures, and we have had to expend in this regard. And so we hope to get some additional funding that will support that. I can't say enough how technology is really gonna be critical to that work. So the last thing I want to say about the, the reentry piece, before I go on to a couple of other things, if I may, is athletics. So we're still waiting for final guidance from that. MIA has been working in committee with the Commissioner and other experts within the Commonwealth, trying to come up with a plan for athletics. We're still waiting for official guidance on that. And again, hopefully, we'll hear a final word on what the status of that will be, in what format. There's been a lot of dialogue about different scenarios and different sports. But until it's finalized, it's really, much like this reentry plan, it's hard to really say anything definitively without people jumping to conclusions, but there is a lot of work to be had, and hopefully, we'll have some clear direction in the very near future on that as well. Any questions about? Any questions about the reentry piece before I jump into a few other things?
I have a couple, Chris. I appreciate you mentioning athletics. And I'm assuming that underneath the heading of athletics, you're going to be throwing in other activities such as marching band.
Yes. Go ahead. Thank you. Thank you. So and another thing, so athletics, the things that we have not received final guidance from the state on are transportation and we've, they're implying things, but they haven't finalized that, to be honest. Athletics as well as extracurricular activities and also elective activities. So there are some courses, thank you for reminding me, Dr. Sorenson, there are some courses such as chorus band, as well as the extracurriculars involved outside of the day in those areas. And we're still waiting for final guidance on. We feel that we've done everything that we can to provide the protective measures should students return. We can mitigate, we can, we can accommodate and provide the the space and the protective equipment that students would need, but we need that final guidance from the Department of Education. They've been collaborating with a lot of organizations and experts specifically around that, particularly for choral students, particularly for wind instruments. So we're waiting for, that's one thing that we're waiting for final guidance on as well. But again, we hope to receive this very soon because August will be here very soon as well. Thank you for reminding.
I had another question too, Ms. Avery. Everything, everything that we have paid attention to over the months has been six feet or ten feet in terms of social distancing and masks. Everybody, all the public health officials are saying six feet or ten feet and masks. You didn't mention mentioned three feet. And then the other thing I want to mention, say, you know, the new, the new toilet paper is Plexiglas. I'm trying to buy Plexiglas for my offices and none of the, none of the stores have any more Plexiglas. Are we thinking about any sort of partitions?
Yes. So thank you, Dr. Sorenson. So part of that facility's work, in addition to the PPE measures, is to provide those protective barriers in certain locations, main offices, areas where individuals will frequent where space would be an issue. So again, we're we're ensuring that those spaces, particular spaces such as our reception areas, our main offices will have protective barriers such as the Plexiglas, and we have been successful in purchasing that. We we're, we're still in question as to how we can utilize that in instructional purpose, for instructional purposes. So we are hesitant to purchase additional for that purpose until we get final guidance for that. But for certain locations, we know what we can do and we are, we've purchased and we will be, we will be setting that up as well.
Where did the three feet come from?
So in the the recent guidance from the Department of Education, you know, looking at CDC as well as the World Health Organization. So I think that came from the World Health Organization guidance.
One of the things, Dr. Sorenson, that I'd like to add, the commissioner made it clear that there would be some videos that will be coming out later this week that will be from the Boston doctors that have confirmed and are also promoting the three foot distance. So once those are available, I'll work with our ED TV staff to kind of get those out into our channels so that people can actually see that and listen to the to the information that's shared out there. So I think that's important for us to have that, you know.
Thank you.
Does anybody else have any questions? Ms. Heywood, did you?
Yes, I just wanted to ask, I guess, going forward, just for, because we we did understand that there were some barriers to education, particularly those communities that are marginalized or speak other languages or lack technologies. And so I guess going forward, you know, how are we communicating with those families? Specifically those who would require even special, you know, special needs, special ed. And yes, how are we going forward with that? To kind of address that, seeing that we probably now have had like some purview into some of the.
Thank you, Ms. Heywood. If I may respond to that?
Yes.
So in one thing that is crystal clear in the guidance, regardless of the model that we find ourselves in is, and I'm glad that the commissioner is making this a priority, as we we need to as well, is that our high need students, and that would be students that you've just mentioned, have frequent education as much as possible in person as much as we possibly can, particularly for a students that are in special programs, students that live in English, as well as other students that may be at, you know, increased at risk as a result of this closure. So that will be part of our educational plan as well, and they certainly prioritize as well as the technology piece, which is critically important. So as I mentioned, all of those grants, part of our objective is to eliminate that barrier. So it's really important for us, whether we're in the classroom, we're in a hybrid model, or we find that we're closing, that we take that barrier away for those students that found themselves in a situation where wireless connectivity was an issue and we were passing out, you know, over a thousand home books in the course of several weeks. So that is certainly a priority in our in our planning, both as we seek funding and prioritize funding for technology, but also programmatically as we create these plans, that those students priority is for in-person instruction as much as we possibly can, given the circumstances and whatever the final directive is in terms of what we can do.
Ms. Badger, did you have a question as well?
I did. So when I read the document, it was like twenty three pages. It wasn't really long. What is, maybe it just wasn't clear to me, or maybe I missed it completely when I was reading it. When we send the three models to the state, what, how are they going to approve it? Or is there, just so that they can check off a box that we have those three and then we can move forward? I know that whole, I know they, the governor just randomly decided that three feet sounds like a good idea, but I guess that's my biggest question is, so how, what, what is the state going to tell us when they get our piece? Because I mean, it's July thirty first, they want it, and school starts in a month.
I think that what the directive will be is if they see something that's of concern, that that they will, they will push back for more information to get to get greater clarity. But I don't, I don't, I haven't heard anything and Dr. Myssis and Mrs. Frye can chime in if they've heard otherwise, but I don't believe that it's going to be an official, you need to wait until it's approved in order to move forward. More of, please submit this framework of a plan is, again, I don't believe it's even going to be great detail that we're going to have to provide them, but we're going to have to check the boxes and answer the questions in order to let them know that we've met the requirements in terms of safety precautions. We've met the requirements in terms of the pressure testing of what our facilities can do and manage, as well as the educational plan is met. So I don't believe that they're going to actually have to officially approve it. But again, if there are any concerns with what we submit, they may push back and say this is insufficient.
That's what I recall the commissioner saying that is when you submit it, that if there was a problem, they would, we would hear from them. So I think they'll be reviewing it for logic and you know, I think one of the concerns that we have is time on learning. And I think they'll, they'll be reviewing certain pieces of that. Again, we have not seen what the template looks like. My impression is going to be a very basic template of information that we send up. And again, we'll, we'll, we'll see it when we, when we, we'll, we'll give you information when we see it.
Our plan and our communication to the community and to this, and to this committee, of course, is going to be much more extensive than what we submit to the Department of Education, for sure.
And then my next question is, and you may, or maybe going to address it in your next statement. But is, I know that currently athletics is during their plyometric workouts and I've had some concern from some parents, like I, I let you, I let you both know. Can you go over the procedures that are being kind of done during the plyometric workout so that, you know, our viewers and maybe other parents can understand what you explained to me on as to how they're social distancing and what's happening?
I can speak to that if you want, Michelle. Can you guys hear me? I'm on my phone. So what they've done is they've actually developed a QR code. North started their plyometrics this week and South started theirs last week. And so they developed a QR code for kids to sign in. The first night they had done a paper signing with different pens and they felt this was a better route. They've socially distanced the kids. They're actually using the posts on the fence by the track for when they spread out and get there and take attendance. The problem initially was the kids that no malicious intent at all. They would, when they would stop for a water break, they would gather. So the coaches would then have to split them up. There are about between three and eight coaches per evening or morning. I think there's two, I can have Scott send it to you. I think there's two that are at four o'clock and two that are at eight in the morning and they're an eight o'clock session, a nine o'clock session or four o'clock or a five o'clock. In the first week, the eight AM and the four PM were more popular than the nine AM and the five PM, because they wanted to get their day, you know, things like that. So they've changed that as well and reached out to the kids. Primarily, the spring coaches at South have been asked to participate because they were not compensated for a spring season, obviously, per the MOA. So they've been participating with them. Each student has to have their own water bottle. Things are sanitized and the kids were not arriving in their masks. They've now mandated that they arrive in their wet masks, even though they're six feet apart. And then when they exercise, they take their masks down and then they put them back up. So they're learning throughout it. It's been a learning curve and the, the kids are phenomenal, but they don't, you know, they're, they're being barked at by their coaches a lot to, when they take a break from the, they're essentially doing stations at different areas on multiple fields, on the baseball field, the football field and the, you know, all the, that whole complex, if that makes sense. So it's kind of a summary. And North is modeling their new AD begin on July one and they're modeling it after the South one that began on July sixth. I think that was the date. So.
Does anybody else have any quick questions? I have a question, but does anybody else have anything else first? No? Okay, on the.
Conditioning, I'm sorry, Kim, it's all conditioning. It's not sports specific. It's all there's nothing, there's no footballs, there's no soccer balls. Yep, it's all running, jumping, core athletic strength.
Before you go, Kim, can I jump on?
Absolutely.
I did get a text from one parent who expressed concern that the captains' practices that are being run, since there are no adults there, there's nobody there to to ensure safety.
It's captains' practices are not sanctioned by the school department or the MIA. For years now, they haven't been. They still, kids put them together and show up places. We did hear about one that was going on and the administration of the school is addressing it this week. But kids, for at least since I've been at South, the MIA squashed captains' practices years ago because of liability and things like that. Unfortunately, the kids, again, they're amazing kids, they get together and say, we're having captains' practices and through a group text, they get kids out there and parents sometimes think it's a, it's part of the school department. It's not. Unfortunately, we didn't have quote unquote, meet the coaches or any of, usually that event happens in June prior to the fall seasons. And the ADs say, and the coaches say, we don't have captains' practices. And I do know of one program that was doing it and they've, and I'll address it again to make sure it stopped. It was a lot of kids were going and they got ahead of it, the administration, but those are not sanctioned. So.
I know all of that's true, but because of, because of the virus, times are different. And we probably have to have a little bit more governance over captains' practices, I believe.
Yep, I agree. And I think I'll ask Scott, as well as the AD at North, to send something out to the fall coaches to, because they're really the voice to the captains as well. So.
I'm sorry.
It is really trying to channel the kids to the plyometrics at both schools instead of, so that they have an opportunity, they really, the the population has been very high, which is a good thing. I mean, the kids want to do it, but the the good news about the plyometrics is that they really, you know, it's, it's governed by coaches and our staff. So.
Great, thank you. On the, so unless anybody, anybody else has anything, on the three feet, my interpretation of it was it's either three feet or six feet, depending on the configuration of the room and if the desks can all face forward or the cohort of the room. So like maybe early learners or whatever would need to, so it's either or, but the desks have to face forward in order for them to allow the three feet. Is that true?
Yeah, so the, the, the current guidance as it stands right now is no, no closer than three feet. Try to get, you know, further if you can as possible, but all desks or tables rectangular primarily facing the same direction. So all students are facing the same direction. That's correct.
And the Plexi, that's optional, right?
We do not have any permission yet to use Plexiglas for instructional purposes in classrooms. The only, the only places that we're purchasing that is for those areas such as the reception and the main office. There may be further guidance coming regarding some science labs and if you have peninsula tables. But at this point, given the guidance we have, those would be off limits. So there may be some adjustments to that. If we could create social distance, maybe of six feet with Plexiglas, but we don't know that yet. We're still waiting for those are some of the specifics we're still waiting for, which is a little frustrating, but another reason why we're not going so specific with our planning. The commissioner probably shouldn't have shared his cell phone number.
We're doing the Plexi in our, in my, my work for early learners too, because they're the ones that are going to have a hard time keeping their masks on.
Yes.
And we're doing the reception area as well, but it, but we also, they have the, the shields too for the teachers, but they have to wear them, the mask underneath them, so it gets very hot.
Yeah, we have purchased special masks and face coverings for nurses, for special populations perhaps that have a hard time hearing impaired so that they'll be able, you know, if they're lip readers. So we are taking those things into consideration as well. So working with Dr. Rogers, we've made additional purchases there. So we're taking everything into consideration, given the guidance we have regarding face masks and coverings and utilizing everything we can. In addition, our health offices are going to be outfitted with much more in terms of materials and and we're creating, you know, the conditions that we would need for reentry there, which will be much more substantial than a typical, a typical year.
Awesome. And last question is, do we have to approve the plans before they're submitted? The three.
There's nothing in the guidance that's, well, there's nothing in the guidance yet that suggests that. And probably because of the short amount of time they're giving us, but that may change, that may change. I don't know.
And and to Ms. Badger's question, my understanding was that we're submitting three and then they'll say, okay, we're going to go a hundred percent or we're going to go a hundred percent remote and then we are prepared for whatever scenario throws at us. No?
I, I don't, I don't think that. I think every school district is in a very unique position because of the capabilities of their infrastructure. So I think for the state to, and and that's one of the things that I'm going to say in my letter to parents is try not to compare what Plymouth does and other school districts, because we have different parameters. We have a completely different transportation system than any school district that I'm aware of. Our buildings, although we have two new high schools, which create some advantages, some of the older schools have much larger classrooms. So I think the capacity issues across the board from our hundred plus year old buildings to our six year old buildings are going to be somewhat of a challenge. But again, keep in mind, it's hard for the commissioner and the Department of Education, the governor to say, we're going to blanket, this is what you need to do because of these differences in buildings.
Great, thank you. Dr. Campbell, did you have, you have more on your.
Sorry, I'm a little long-winded this evening. I'll try to be as quick as possible, but I wanted to give you an update on two things. One, the administrative hires, which has been mentioned this evening and then another thing regarding my role. So as you know, we, it's been mentioned, we have a lot of retirements and administrative positions to fill. So as you know, we've recently appointed Dr. Stacy Rogers as the, as the new incoming assistant superintendent for administration instruction. Her position will go into effect November second, when I take over as superintendent. And we're very fortunate to have Dr. Rogers in this role. She comes with a great breadth and depth of experience, pre K to twelve and is really going to be a great asset in that role. So I'm very happy for us. and, and is really going to be a, a great asset in that role. So I'm very happy for us. So we're looking forward to that. We're also in the process of finalizing the interim assistant superintendent for human resources and hope to have that finalized in a couple of coming days. So our intention at the August three meeting is to prevent, prevent, excuse me, present to you both of these new administrators, uh, to this committee. So look forward to that August third. This week, we begin to seek a new director of facilities, facilities director, as Mr. Montron is retiring, I believe, after 35 years. He'll be retiring in late September. So initial interviews are taking place this Thursday. And again, we hope to have someone to present to you in the coming weeks there as well. And the last thing that I just wanted to share, and Dr. Myssis and I were talking about that, this, where my role doesn't officially begin until November second, is I plan to provide you, to initiate an entry plan as new superintendent, which Dr. Myssis and I spoke about this earlier today. So it's my goal to begin this process actually in August and continue it into the beginning of the school year, even though I'm not officially on this capacity. This, I know I've been here for 12 years, but this is a new role. So it's really important for me that I am very deliberate and intentional through this process. It's going to, you know, I want to have an opportunity to speak to all stakeholders across this community, get feedback and perspective from our teachers, our administrators, our students, our parent organizations, town leadership, this school committee, among other groups that, you know, are escaping me right now, but to really take a deliberate approach to this. And then my intention is to present you with these findings in November as I officially start as superintendent. And it's my hope that this entry plan, coupled with our new strategic plan, will really provide me some great direction regarding my goals in the coming year and, and probably past that. So I just wanted to provide that information to you this evening as well.
All right. Any other questions for Dr. Campbell or comments? All right. Thank you, both Dr. Myssis and Dr. Campbell. Um, Ms. Badger, um, would you like to do the retirements, please?
Ms. Frye does the presidencies.
Oh, I'm sorry. Gosh, I was thinking, yeah, I'm sorry. Yes, Ms. Frye. Thank you, Dr. Sorenson. Nope, she went blank.
But I can do it. It matters. I mean, I have it right in.
I was thinking the, um, the resignations and the leaves of absences, but Ms. Frye, are you still there? Yes, okay. Oh, you're muted.
Sorry, my.
That's okay.
Yes, I have a new puppy as well.
I was going to say, we have dueling puppies and my puppy is going to hear both of the puppies barking.
The puppy. So my child just got home from baseball, so he has puppy duty. So. I apologize. We're on retirements. Sorry.
Thank you.
Um, yes, we have two retirements to report tonight, both incredible years of service. Catherine McKnight, who's a grade three classroom teacher with 31 years of service from South Elementary. And then Frank Silva, who's our supervisor of buildings and grounds. I don't, I know in my time, I've never announced this many years, but 47 years of service. And I've spent an incredible amount of time with Frank in my years and I just want to thank him personally for what he's given our district as well. He's 47 years is something. That's pretty remarkable time.
Amazing.
Great. All right, Ms. Badger.
No, it really is something. Um, and on behalf of the school committee, I would like to, you know, thank both of these individuals for their hard work and dedication to the Plymouth schools and wish them a very happy retirement.
Thank you. Okay, reports and proposals from committee members. Does anyone have any reports? No. That's good. It's been a quiet, quiet couple of weeks. PYDC, who'd like to?
No, there wasn't a July meeting.
Okay, great. This, this, this might be easier than we think. How about the building committee?
The building committee didn't have a quorum, so that'll be this Thursday.
All right. All right, and personnel.
Yes, we have a number to report, certificated appointments. We have 10 coach and advisor appointments. We have two classified appointments. We have one in leave of absences. We have a total of three.
Great. Thank you very much. All right. Next on the agenda is the home education plans. Dr. Myssis?
Yes, tonight, um, we have 25 home education plans that have been reviewed by Dr. Kalpin's office and they have met the guidelines set forth by the school committee of Plymouth. And I recommend approval of the plans that have been included in the agenda this evening.
Great. Do we have a motion?
I'll move it.
Great. Ms. Burgess, Burgess moves it in a second.
A second.
Mr. Shelley? Oh, yeah, I think I saw Mr. Shelley go up first. And any questions or any comments, discussions? Nope. Oh, Ms. Badger.
Sorry, I just have a quick question. Have we seen more home education plans this year? Or do we think we will see more home educations this year than in prior years?
There, uh, from the beginning, I would say, uh, in March, we started getting inquiries about home education plans. We've had Dr. Halpin work with families regarding that. Uh, one of the things that, um, we have pretty much anticipated that we would see home education plans increase. I have noticed that we have some inquiries at the kindergarten level, um, more than we have in the past. So I think there's some level of concern there. But one of the things that, um, the department of education is, is looking at is, is purchasing with partnership of school districts, uh, learning management system, also known as an LMS. And that would help school districts to offer, um, a consistent virtual platform across the Commonwealth. So that may help some parents who are looking for an independent, you know, experience this, you know, because of COVID and not have to, you know, come to school every day. So, um, Dr. Halpin is in contact with anyone who has the request. But to your point, Ms. Badger, I, we have seen a slight uptick in requests for information.
Great. Anyone else have anything? No? We'll do a roll call vote. Ms. Burgess? Ms. Burgess?
Oh.
How do you vote on the motion?
Tell, tell me what.
How, how do you vote on the motion to approve the homeschool schooling?
Oh, oh, okay. Yes.
Yes, Mr. Morgan?
Yes.
Dr. Sorenson? Mr. Shelley?
Yes.
Ms. Hayward?
Yes.
And Ms. Badger?
Yeah.
Okay, so those are unanimously approved. And Ms. Badger, are you able to do the schedule of bills? Can you see that from where you are? The warrant? Okay, so we'll go ahead and do that.
Right. Whereas the school committee members have been provided with a copy of the cost and our transfer and transaction summary report and warrant for review. I move that the Plymouth School Committee accept and approve the reports and accounts warrant S zero six two five two zero, dated June 25th, 2020, in the amount of $733,703.76 as presented.
Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Oh, Ms. Burgess, any discussion? No? Okay, seeing none. We'll go ahead. Ms. Burgess, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mr. Morgan?
Yes.
And Dr. Sorenson?
Yes.
Mr. Shelley?
Yes.
Ms. Hayward?
Yes.
Ms. Badger? And I vote. Okay, so that's approved. And the grants and revolving funds.
Whereas school committee members have been provided with a copy of the grants and revolving funds warrant for review. I move that the Plymouth School Committee accept and approve the grants and revolving funds warrant G zero six two five two zero dated June 25th, 2020, in the amount of $91,320.96 as presented.
Great. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Any discussion? All right, we'll do a roll call. Ms. Burgess?
Yes.
Mr. Morgan?
Yes.
Dr. Sorenson?
Yes.
Mr. Shelley?
Yes.
Mrs. Hayward? Yes. And Ms. Badger?
Yes.
I vote yes. So that's unanimous. It looks like we have another accounts payable warrant. We've got two of each here. Ms. Badger, you're muted.
Sorry about that. I unmuted and then muted myself. Many members have been provided with a copy of the cost center transfer and transaction summary report and warrant for review. I move that the Plymouth School Committee accept and approve the reports and accounts payable warrant S twenty J U L one dated June 30th, 2020, in the amount of $189,945.76 as presented.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
All right, seeing none, we'll go ahead and take a vote. Ms. Burgess?
Yes.
Mr. Morgan?
Yes.
Dr. Sorenson?
Yes.
Mr. Shelley?
Yes.
Mrs. Hayward?
Yes.
Ms. Badger?
Yes.
And I vote yes, it's unanimous. And then, um, the grants and revolving funds warrant, the second one.
Whereas company members have invited with a copy of the grants and revolving fund warrant for review. I move that the Plymouth School Committee accept and approve the grants and revolving funds warrant G twenty J U L one dated June 30th, 2020, in the amount of $48,320.63 as presented.
Great, thank you. Do we hear, do I hear a second? Hayward, thank you. And any discussion? All right, Mrs. Burgess?
Yes.
Mr. Morgan?
Yes.
Dr. Sorenson?
Yes.
Mrs. Trishelli?
Yes.
Mrs. Hayward?
Yes.
Ms. Badger?
Yes.
And yes, so that's approved. All right, next on the agenda is obsolete equipment. Dr. Myssis, did you want to speak to that? Oh, you're muted now too. You're muted, Dr. Myssis.
There we go. Yes, thank you. Yes. Tonight, we have disposable equipment at South Elementary. These are computer lab tables and we actually have some, some chairs that we brought over from South High School. Uh, computer lab tables are obsolete and out of use and also the chairs are just broken and they, they will be disposed of. Also, a couple of other items, a broken TV. The TVs are 21 years old, big large tube type. And that will be disposable and a broken projector and an Epson printer. So all those are beyond their useful life and I recommend disposal.
Okay, great. And.
I'll move the recommendation of administration regarding the disposal of equipment.
Thank you. Second? Ms. Badger, any discussion? All right, Ms. Burgess?
Yes.
Mr. Morgan?
Yes.
Dr. Sorenson?
Yes.
Mrs. Trishelli?
Yes.
Ms. Hayward?
Yes.
Ms. Badger?
Yes.
I vote yes. Okay, and then there's another one, the exam table?
Yes, we have an exam table at South Elementary. This is an exam table that is not being used. It is going to be donated to South, South Shore Medical, uh, but there's really no use for it. And also we're making room for an additional space for, um, COVID-19 related spaces necessary for our plan. I recommend approval of this obsolete equipment to be donated.
Great. Do we have a motion?
I'll move.
Nope, I think Ms. Badger. And then second, Ms. Dr. Sorenson?
Sure.
Okay. Any discussion? All right, Mrs. Burgess?
Yes.
Mr. Morgan?
Yes.
Dr. Sorenson?
Yes.
Mrs. Shelley?
Yes.
Mrs. Hayward?
Yes.
Ms. Badger?
Yes.
And I vote yes. So that's approved. All right, next on the agenda is the minutes. We have a motion. Ms. Badger?
I just have one edit, um, on page two on the paragraph where it starts, Ms. Badger. At the, the last sentence, it says, Ms. Badger said supports. We just need to include she.
Okay, anything else? So, so do I have a motion with those? Oh, Dr. Sorenson?
I have one, one very minor change. Uh, on page five, the second paragraph, it should be, uh, Dr. Sorenson, I'm trying to bring this up here, said that he was going to bring this T H I S up. I mean, the T was left off, so it's a different word.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. So do we have a motion with the edits? Badger?
I'll move that we approve the minutes of, um, June, sorry, uh, June 1st, 2020 with the edits.
All right. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you. Any discussion? All right, Ms. Burgess?
Yes.
Morgan?
Yes.
Dr. Sorenson?
Yes.
Mrs. Trishelli? Yes. Mrs. Hayward?
Yes.
And Ms. Badger?
Yes.
And I vote yes, so that's set. And then the minutes from the executive session of June 1st. Do we have a motion?
I'll move that we accept the minutes of the executive section, session of June 1st.
Okay, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, Mr. Morgan? And any discussion? No, seeing none? Okay, Mrs. Burgess? Oh, oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Badger. I didn't see you. I'm sorry. Did you have?
It's okay. I didn't, I don't know if I'm frozen. I don't know what I look like.
No, you're not. You, you look beautiful.
The one thing I'd like to add and into the executive session minutes, I think, is our discussion that we had about conducting the vote out of executive session and the, how some of us were a little uncomfortable, uh, including that. So I don't know if a sentence like, Ms. Badger brought up the idea of not conducting this vote in executive session as it is a discussion. She, she felt the community should hear minus any confidential information. I just liked that one line or something like it added.
All right. Ms. Grimes, is that okay for you to add or to repeat that?
Absolutely.
Thank you. All right. And so do I have a motion with the changes?
I'll make the motion to approve the executive session minutes with the changes discussed.
Thank you. And a second?
Second it. Okay. All right. Any discussion?
All right, Mrs. Burgess?
Yes.
Mr. Morgan?
Yes.
Dr. Sorenson?
Yes.
Mrs. Trishelli?
Yes.
Mrs. Hayward?
Yes.
Ms. Badger?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Oh, Ms. Ms. Grimes.
I just, I missed who seconded that.
That was Mr. Morgan, correct?
Yes. Actually, no, I made the motion. I believe Michelle seconded it.
Okay, I wrote down Ms. Burgess and Mr. Morgan, but that might have been the regular ones. Okay, Ms. Badger seconded. Yes, that's right. Ms. Badger seconded it. All right, great. So that's all set. And the minutes from June 29th. Your motion?
I'll move that we accept the minutes of, uh, June 29th.
Thank you. Second? Seconded by Mrs. Badger. I mean, Ms. Badger. And any discussion? All right, we'll do a vote. Mrs. Burgess?
Yes.
Mr. Morgan?
Yes.
Dr. Sorenson?
Yes.
Mrs. Trishelli?
Stayed.
And Mrs. Hayward?
Yes.
Ms. Badger?
Yes.
And I vote yes. So that's a, um, six yes and one abstention. And then we have the executive minutes from June 29th. Any motion?
I'll move that we approve the executive session minutes for June 29th.
Okay, do we have a second? Ms. Badger? And any discussion? All right, seeing none. Mrs. Burgess?
Yes.
Mr. Morgan?
Yes.
Dr. Sorenson?
Yes.
Mrs. Trishelli?
Stayed.
Mrs. Hayward?
Yes.
Ms. Badger?
Yes.
And I'm, yes. So that's, um, six yes and one abstention. And, um, Mrs. Grimes, do we have any comments from the public today?
No, none.
None. Okay. All right, so now we are going to take a vote to move into executive session. And, uh, Dr. Sorenson, you can correct me if I do this wrong. And then when we come out, it would just be for the purposes to adjourn the meeting, correct?
Yes.
Great. All right, so this is a roll. Great. All right, so this is a roll call vote. Or actually, do we have a motion?
You have to state the reason for executive session.
I do not the motion person? The motion does, right? Whoever's pleased.
You state the reason, motion, then the motion can vote it.
Okay, all right. I thought that was moved into the motion. All right, so we are um, going to go into executive session for potential litigation and non-union personnel. Do I see a motion?
I'm moving to go into executive session for the purposes stated.
Okay. Then Michelle Badger will be the second. Any discussion? Roll call vote?
Wait, oh, yeah, I do, shouldn't you say that when we come out that we'll?
I did.
She did.
Oh, I'm sorry, I missed.
No, that's okay. I, I actually was, I don't see me. For reaction to make sure I was doing it right. Mrs. Burgess?
I said yes.
Okay, Mr. Morgan?
Yes.
Dr. Sorenson?
Yes.
Mrs. Shelley?
Yes.
Mrs. Hayward?
Yes.
And um, Ms. Badger?
Yes.
All right, and I vote yes. So we are now in executive session. Do we need a few minutes to?